Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for January 9th, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Here.
Eliason?
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Heschel?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have two students who are joining us this evening from Merrill Middle School. We have Morgan Wilson and Peyton Zitlow who are leading us in the pledge of allegiance. So they will come forward and begin the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We appreciate you girls coming out tonight, even the warmth of your homes to join us to welcome the staff for the rest of the meeting, but we have other things to do tonight. We certainly will soon. So Morgan, thank you so much for coming. And Peyton, pleasure having you here tonight. Thanks so much. With that, we will move into board and administrative reports. I just have two quick announcements. Friday, January 11th will be the first legislative meeting at CISA 6. There's a breakfast meeting at 7:30 for school board members and for superintendents. So if you're interested in attending that, you can let Sherry know, but also let CISA 6 know so that they have enough bacon for everybody. And...
What time does it start, girl? Pardon me? What time does it start?
7:30.
Breakfast is 7:30 and the actual session begins at 8:30.
Okay.
But if there are more than two of us in attendance from the board, then we have to have that notice. So just let Sherry know.
It's this Friday?
This Friday. And it will be the first Friday then of February and March as well.
And it's at the CISA here?
CISA 6 here in Oshkosh, right.
And Dr. Herzog has sent an email out to everybody earlier this week with the detailed information on that for you.
Great, thank you. And then, as some of you know, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards sponsors a day at the Capitol for board members and school superintendents every other year, and this is the year. And that will be March 13th, which is a Wednesday. I sent out two notices because I had the date wrong in the first one. It should have been the 13th, Wednesday, the 13th. So we do have a board meeting that night, so if we attend, we'll have to make sure we get back here in time to the board meeting that night.
That's early release.
But that's always a great opportunity to interact with the lawmakers from our area and to interact and network with school board representatives and superintendents from other school districts. So you might want to consider that as we move forward. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Herzog. So we have a lot of wonderful things to share with us, but before we get into my report, we may make sure that we turn this over to our two student representatives. So I believe last time I started with North, if I remember correctly. So this time, Stephanie and Carolyn. Carolyn, all yours.
Hello, everyone. I hope you guys' holidays were great. I'm here with the January update from Oshkosh West. So to start off with sports, the basketball teams, we played against our rival North last night. We tried, and everyone played great, but with the injuries we've had this season, it's been rough for the team, but we're working on it. And they're going to be playing against Fond du Lac this Friday. And then the wrestling team is doing great as always. They had five people move on to state last year, and we hope to get more this year. And the dance team, as always, as well, is doing great. They got first in a tournament about two weeks ago. Music and arts, we will have the Drama Club performing musical comedy Murders, and that will be on January 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th. They are preparing for their mock feinting fights and laughter as they work hard to really prepare for the play. And then more on music and the arts, the choir and the band will be doing a joint concert together where they have been composing pieces and really practicing their skills. So these are pictures of two a cappella groups, collegiate a cappella groups that came in and worked with the choir students at West. They are from Madison and from Stevens Point. I'm not going to try and pronounce their names. They're long and complicated, but they were great, and they taught them how to beat ox. As for prom this year at West, the theme is going to be masquerade, so everyone is very excited about that. And for clubs, in the top right corner, that is a picture from the recent mock trial scrimmage that has been going on, practicing for many months, and we will be having our regional competition next month. Below that is the Rotary Club. They were able to go over to Oshkosh Corp. and speak with some people that work there regarding volunteer opportunities and just how they can help out with the community as well. And then on the left is the recent DACA competition that happened this last Saturday. Eight of us went, and all of us got medals except for three, but still everyone did great, and it was really good. The leadership conference, student government was able to go to the Bucks game and able to go to different classes or really just have different lessons taught to them, and it was really a great day for everyone. Appreciation breakfast, we were able to appreciate our teachers at West as we held a holiday breakfast for them, and they were serenaded by the Magical's that morning. And then lastly, open mic night. Throughout the holiday season, we hosted a mic night, and we had a lot in attendance. People enjoyed themselves and dressed up, as you can see on the left, and got very into the spirit. Have a great month.
Thank you very much.
So North had a lot of great things happening last month before break, so here's some of that. We had a holiday door decorating contest going on the week before break. So these were three of the winners. We had winners in each grade level, and it really helped the school be more festive during our last week. We also had a candy cane sale where we sold candy cane grams that you could deliver to friends during class where they got delivered. And then on the right is someone delivering stuff from a food and toy drive, and we also got a bunch of wrapping paper and wrapping supplies. The band and choir both had holiday concerts last month, and we also featured a Soon soloist, Dr. Cartwright, at our band concert. We also had the holiday collage concert in school the last day before break, so all the students and staff got to come down and see the band orchestra and Magical's perform during school day. For athletics, the sports, we have basketball, boyswimming, wrestling, hockey, and dance team going on right now. And on the right is a picture from yesterday's game where North hosted a doubleheader versus West, and they won both of the games, so that was really fun. And then on the left is a picture of the dance team competing last Saturday at Invite at West. And right now rehearsals for the musical Mary Poppins are in full swing. It opens February 7th to 10th at The Grand, and those are some pictures of choreography practices. So yeah, coming up, everyone's kind of stressed about finals, and then we have second semester, and then musical, and more winter sports. That's all.
Ladies, as always, thank you so much. We really enjoy your presentation. So we're going to go ahead and start with some highlights from some of the other schools across the entire district. Over at South Park Middle School, they had the Giving Tree. And the holidays were definitely a little bit brighter for this year for 18 South Park students, thanks to the generosity of South Park families and staff. As a part of the Giving Tree initiative, students received donated items, both wanted and needed, and were extremely thankful for the gifts. Over at Webster Stanley Elementary School, third and second graders recently created an awesome display at the Oshkosh Community for a gingerbread science, technology, engineering, and mathematics project. I don't know about you, but that sounds yummy to me. And the project involved a lot of creativity as well as critical thinking. Back to South Park Middle School, teachers spent the month of December getting a refresher on learning targets, success criteria, and lesson closure. They worked in teams, watching videos, reading articles, and having discussions about these topics to better implement them into their lessons. Art students at Oshkosh West High School recently received recognition for their work, which will be featured during the 2019 Student Art Exhibit at the State Education Convention at the end of January. Congratulations to Peyton Willis, Vary Roloff, and Haley Norton.
Excuse me, I just want to say I am thrilled that we have Oshkosh represented at the Wisconsin Association of School Boards convention. It's actually a joint convention with all, including the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials and the Wisconsin Association of...
Superintendents.
Superintendents. That got the wasp.
School District Association.
Thank you. School District Association. I don't remember when Oshkosh was last represented at this event, and it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase the wonderful things our art students do in the district with thousands of people who attend that convention in January.
Yeah, I walked by those partitions for the last three years, and I was saying, you know, we do rest stuff better than what's up on here now, so that's...
That's awesome.
Well, that's great.
Over at Perry-Tippler and the Alps program, the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Team recently hosted the annual student versus staff basketball game. I'm not sure, but that probably was a really good event to attend. I missed that one. In addition to many fun halftime activities, the Tippler and Alps Band also did an outstanding job of keeping the crowd entertained before the game and during halftime. The fifth annual Oshkosh West Wildcat event is a statewide dance team competition. Recently welcomed 37 high school dance teams from across the entire state. It's a cornerstone of the competition is the annual Spread the Warmth campaign to benefit local students in need of warm clothing items during the winter months. Numerous winter hats, scarves, and mittens were donated by dancers and spectators and will be given to local students. The event is organized by the Oshkosh West Dance Team and serves as the organization's main fundraiser. Great job to everyone involved. Members of the Fans Club at Oshkosh West High School recently attended the WIAA Sportsman's Summit in Stevens Point. 106 high schools were represented by teams of students, school administrators, coaches, school board members, and community leaders. The mission of the Sportsman's Summit is to strengthen the principles of sportsmanship by promoting teamwork through networking, as well as the sharing of resources, and instilling the motivation to make a difference. Smith Elementary School recently had the pleasure of welcoming the South Park Middle School Orchestra for an all-school council concert. The school also welcomed the Oshkosh West Magical's for caroling through the halls before winter break. And I had the luxury of attending that event. It was wonderful, and all I can say is Ms. Gunlon definitely had her own highlight moment, as you might say, from the Magical's. It was very nice. Oshkosh North Community students recently visited the Wisconsin State Capitol Building. Students spent time in the Senate chambers, Assembly chambers, and the governor's conference room. They also had the opportunity to participate in the panel-style discussion with three law clerks who shared with them their primary responsibilities to the justices of the Wisconsin Supreme Court. This holiday season, students at Washington Elementary School colored placemats and donated them to the Evergreen Retirement Community. The residents loved them so much that they brought them back to their rooms to keep. In the spirit of giving, Washington students also rose to the challenge to make the Student Council-sponsored Food Drive Challenge a tremendous success. Many student families and local businesses contributed food items, in fact, over 1,400 in order to stock Washington's food pantry to the brim. Here are just some examples of our teachers, and they are continuing to really remind us about how caring our teachers are. We're so grateful for these individuals and for all of our teachers throughout the district. So not as full this go-around, but quite candidly, there's only been technically a week since last time we met that I was working. So as you know, as superintendent, I'm always committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh, and these are just a few examples of some where I've been spending my time this past week.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you so much. I do have a supplemental report or highlight that I would like to read, if that's okay with everybody. I'm in receipt of a letter from the Wisconsin High School Forensic Association that I thought was worthy of recognition. On behalf of the Wisconsin High School Forensic Association, I extend congratulations to your school, Oshkosh West High School, Director Scott, and the cast of the play, The Crucible, for their outstanding achievement at the 2018 State Theater Festival held November 15th through 17th at the Vertabo University in La Crosse. They received the All-State Award for their production commemorating their participation in the state festival. Additionally, the product, the production earned Ensemble Award, Outstanding Actor, that was Catherine Matzik as Abigail Williams, Michael Williams as John Proctor, and Grant Horton as Judge Danforth. I hope that your students attend the many educational workshops as well as view other plays that were advanced to the state contests. It was truly a celebration of high school theater. You and your school should be extremely proud of your drama program and the accomplishment of this entire cast and crew who represented Oshkosh West High School in such an outstanding manner. I look forward to their continued participation in future festivals. And that was signed, Adam Jacoby, the Executive Director.
Nice, very nice. There are just so many positive things that go on every day in our classrooms and in our extracurricular activities that it's hard to keep up with them, but it's important that we recognize the ones that we are made aware of and celebrate the contributions of our staff as well as the contributions and successes of our students and the support of their family. With that, we'll move into other reports. Are there any committee chairs who have reports this evening? All right, then, moving on. We have received a written report. I don't know that we have any questions or need to bring that forward at this time. All right, moving right along. The non-agenda-related public forum. I know at least one individual had signed up for that, but I don't see him right now. Okay, then, moving on to agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wanted to address the board on an agenda-related topic? All right, seeing none, we'll keep moving here. Move on to the workshop. The 2018 Summer School Review and 2019 Summer School Program Plan Overview with Doris Bailey and Julie Conrad. Welcome, ladies.
Hello. And Julie Conrad, I'm the Director of Curriculum Assessment, and summer school comes under my umbrella and responsibilities, and I have with me the 4K through 5 Summer School Principal, Doris Bailey. And Doris is also, during her daytime job, is a math teacher at Oshkosh West High School. So we're here today to give you the review and the preview of what's coming up. So Doris will kick us off.
Okay, hello. It's always nice to think about summer in the middle of January, so we're going to start with what happened last summer first, and then we'll lead you into some of the plans for this coming summer. So some of the highlights were that almost 4,000 course enrollments participated in last summer, and that included over 2,000 of our students who attended at least one time during the summer school program, which is really incredible because there are so many other things that could be participated in. We also always look forward to having the ESOL and newcomer courses. They're growing each year, and so we anticipate that, to continue that trend. We did have a split last year because Traeger was under construction, so we did move some of our programs to Tippler and Shapiro, which did have a little effect on our enrollment as well. We had a new pay structure last year, which was a positive, we think, impact in that we had over, roughly 93% of our teachers for summer school were Oshkosh Area School District teachers, which was our goal. And it had a positive impact on the classroom and the behaviors that we saw as well. And this was up from roughly 77% the year before. So we're not going to go through all this, obviously, but it just shows the trends from year to year. Our Ready for Kindergarten is always a positive place to start our students in summer, a good experience for them to do before school starts, so we encourage that. Students enroll, or parents enroll their students in that to give them a good preview of what school is like. And then our other courses are listed there. You can see the trends are up and down. Some of that is the impact from changing schools, but we can move on. And stepping up to sixth grade, this year we hope again with the move back to Traeger that we will have more students in that course that was affected kind of a little more than usual last year with the switch, we believe. So we're going to try to publicize that a little more with our fifth-grade teachers. And band and orchestra continue to be strong, strongly supported, and it is incredible to see what they can do in one week in a band course, and the end of the week, how much growth has occurred in that week. So we do encourage those. Those are later in the summer, usually.
You'll also note that our English Communication Skills is for our ELs at the high school level, and we had this year Forward Services offered a program specifically for those high school students, so that's why the zero enrollment. But what we're doing this year is we're actually partnering with that, with Forward Services, to bring that under the summer school umbrella. So we have a partnership idea that's going to actually bring that number back up. So going into our high school program numbers, the big enrollment inside of summer school is credit recovery, and we really encourage our students to take that opportunity to get back on track during the summer. And then you can also see our high school enrichment courses enrollment is very strong as well. We have lots of students taking advantage of enrichment opportunities such as the athletic summer camps, the music camps, also enrichment and elective courses for credit to get ahead on credit offerings, especially in the areas of health. And then taking driver's education during the summer is a big help for a lot of students. And so overall, you can see our enrollment is down from 2017, but we absolutely have ideas and reasons for that course enrollment decline, and we'll continue to highlight that throughout our program. Then once again, through our high school program totals, you can see where the total credits earned are at, and we had a, we did a different format for credit recovery. We did a very much like a learning lab format where students come in and work at their own pace, and that was a great success. We had a lot of credits recovered in that format, and you can tell from the increase in credits. They're based on the number of students. Financial impact. So the financial impact of summer school as written in the board report is a little complicated because it goes over two fiscal years. So we're going to start summer school in the 1819 school year, and we're going to end summer school in the 1920 school year. So figuring out all the budget pieces really doesn't all come out until after we get through this fiscal year. So as you can see, for 1819, that is what our budget was, but we don't have all the final numbers. What we're anticipating is that we're going to be at a positive $828. And you may be saying, why such the difference between 2017 to 2018? And the reason is, is if you remember, we did that increase in pay structure because one of our goals was to recapture our Oshkosh Area School District teachers, and we did that. Going from 77% to 93% made a huge difference. And so now, our job this year is we are going to really maintain, we're going to hold our staffing numbers, and we're really work on increasing student enrollments to get that back up. At the end of the day, the summer school, though, should not necessarily be a revenue generator because it really should be a cost-recovery type program. But we do benefit because we do have the extra costs if we have the buildings open, you know, those types of facilities types things, but we were very glad that we were that close and well-planned when it came to budgeting.
Okay, so some of our plan changes is we are, at this point, looking to hire a summer school person for high school. So I'm K through 8, and we're looking for the new person for 9 through 12, which will happen in the next week or two. K through 5, we'll go back to Traeger, which will also impact our enrollment. We really do think that that had a large impact on the K through 5 because of the split. The siblings were not at the same schools, and the students that would normally go to Traeger, some of them did not attend summer school, which impacted our overall numbers. So hopefully that, and there's also, will be more space available to us. So that should be a positive change back to Traeger. K 2 would be, the differences in the past, we've held at Traeger, we've used mostly the elementary school and only a couple classrooms at the middle, but we're going to try to split a little more because we did notice that behaviors were much better when the smaller students, the younger students, were separated a little more from the older ones when we did the split last year. So that was something that the teachers and the lead teacher requested, that we could possibly keep them a little bit more separated because there is a large number of students that attend Traeger in summer, so it will help. And so no classes this summer at Shapiro or Tippler. We are going to eliminate the advanced math courses due to enrollment from the past couple years. The trend was going down, but keep in mind that those students can still attend summer school, and we do have a proper placement for them because we have multiple level classes as we would place them in the appropriate class. If they were to take a math class, they would still be able to take for their level in advanced classes. It's not just going to be called that. So we would do proper placement anyway. And the courses are multi-level. And we continue to seek new course proposals for STEM classes at the elementary school level and middle school level. Our proposed dates are for 15 days this summer, with July 4th always falling in the middle. We always have to work around that, so this year, July 4th is on a Thursday, so we will have no school that week on Thursday or Friday. And middle school and elementary never, we do not have school on Fridays normally. So that is our proposed schedule for K through 8. And for 9 through 12, those are the dates. With two, three-week sessions, we have to have a minimum number of hours for high school to get credits. So that's how that pans out with our proposed no-day. In the regular school calendar, we have to start on June 11th, which then dictates the rest of the calendar.
It's often asked, you know, why are you going into those days during the EAA air venture? Well, air venture used to be that very last week in July or the first week in August, and when that switched, that greatly impacted us because we absolutely tried to stay out of EAA air venture time. Now we have no option because we're blocked in on either side, as far as when can we start from the end of school, and we have to have 15-day sessions. So we're locked in. And so what we decided to do here is, since we were locked in anyway, we felt that we were going to get better attendance if we had July 4th and July 5th off instead of having like the Thursday off and having teachers and high school students come back on the 5th. We felt like that that would be better attendance and better registration for the second session. So we're going to give that a, we're going to give that a go. And I believe in the packet I left off, or five in your packet, and I corrected that. So my, like, you go through it so many times and then you forget, like, which... I had the correct number of days.
Yes.
Just forgot the no-school element.
Okay, and these are locations that we are proposing to go back to Traeger. Athletic and music camps may be held at other school sites, and that will be in our packet that we send out to parents later on. All of that information will be in there, and those camps are at different dates as well.
Credit, credit recovery, once again, we are going to do the same format as we piloted or did last summer, with Race or Dash being for those students that had just missed the mark as far as passing for that course. We have them come in and recover their credit and catch up during that, June 11th through June 21st. And in that lab model, what we do is we hire our Oshkosh Area School teachers in the areas of English, Math, Science, and Social Studies to help work with those students in that lab format. And that was one area, before, we would just have a general teacher in the learning lab. And that was one area before we would just have a general teacher in the learning lab area. And now, having that targeted support has really helped in increasing the credit recovery for our students. These are the proposed enrichment courses. However, they are not they're not the only ones, but this is our usual first start of offering when it comes to enrichment and especially the ones that are credit-bearing.
When you say that one is a new course, does that follow the regular process of course approval?
Yes, it does. And actually, the Great Art Doors was approved back in October.
Okay.
Yep. That transitioned to high school course that had been approved the year before, but we did not have the opportunity, we didn't have enough students to run it, and there was some switch in the Boys and Girls Club. So, we're going to try it, we're going to try and run it again in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club that transitioned to high school course. And these are the things that are proposed to be captured in the course. And then E-Academy. E-Academy runs across both sessions of summer school. That's the way E-Academy runs because we're part of the Wisconsin E Network. And other students outside of the Ashkeshiary School District also sign up for those courses. But these are our proposed E-Academy courses where students can get ahead on their credit requirements for towards graduation.
And these are our proposed K through eight courses, but we are still, I am still getting some in the next week. So, we might have some additional offerings as well. And again, these are proposed offerings, and then it depends on enrollments, whether they run. So, we are always looking for new STEM classes and new active learning classes as well. Our camps, we have athletic camps that normally run from the time school is out until the time sports start in the fall. So, these are our proposed schedules at the CATS runs at West, but any student in the district can attend at West or at North and whichever session fits their needs. So, they don't have to attend West to go to West. They can attend whichever camp fits their needs. And there's the proposal for those. And that's the Spartan ones we have.
Excuse me. Are those strength and conditioning and the CATS programs then off on July 4th and 5th as well? Or do they meet on those days?
They would be off on July 4th, and they do not run on Friday. This Friday one, I will have to clarify with the teacher on that one, but I would suggest, yes, we're off 4th and 5th.
Just so the families know what's going on there.
Yes, yes. In addition to when they register within the course packet, they get this piece. When it comes to the athletic and band camps, they get additional communications on expectations and how things run from each of the lead instructors.
And then, we have orchestra lessons, which are coordinated with the orchestra teachers, and they schedule those. Those are offered during the normal summer school sessions at North. And those times are determined based on students and the instructor. They schedule those separately. The choir camp dates are to be determined as well as the orchestra camp. But the marching band, the beginning band, and the middle school band, those are the proposed dates for those end times at this point. And all of that information will go out in the parent packet that goes out later. Driver's education instruction will be at West High School this year, and there is a fee involved because that is a self-sustaining class. So, the fee is, I believe, $210 for the behind-the-wheel and then $115 for the classroom sessions. And those are there.
And that is the same, those are the same fees that are applied during the school Then we get into staffing. This is our proposed high school staffing. And so, we set up a structure, a framework of what staffing we think or predict we're going to need in order to run what we just proposed. This does not mean this is how many staff we're actually going to hire because it is all student enrollment-driven. So, if we don't, if we don't need 10 enrichment teachers, we won't hire 10 enrichment teachers. However, if we need 12, then we will hire 12. So, all of that will fluctuate. You will get a proposed staffing or you will get the actual staffing resolution in April, and that will come to the board.
Yes. The same thing goes for K through eight staffing. These are based on prior years and the hiring that we needed. The summer school pay, this is the same as last year, that we felt, we felt it worked very well. We did get positive feedback from our teachers and not just on the pay, but from having our own teachers in the classroom, the amount of learning and the consistency that happened.
So, timelines.
So, we are right now in the process of, I am gathering course proposals and clarifying some details on those for elementary, middle school. And we will be sending out communication to teaching staff. I've already started that. And how they are to apply for their summer positions. They're all based on enrollment always, so we have to wait to officially hire anyone until we get enrollments. During the week of February 18th, February 18th, we plan to send out registration home through IC. These are sent out electronically with the information.
Coming out in the next, was it January 21st that we said? We're going to send out a preliminary summer school hold the dates. This is coming. However, though, our families do read the board packets because we have already gotten questions on summer school dates and asking for more information. So, actual online registration, K through 12, will occur starting on March 4th. And then, at any time, even though registration may close, principals or other instructional staff can recommend students to be placed into courses based on their needs, even after the deadlines and registration dates. And then, staff will notify their teaching position.
Yes. For non-OSD families would need to complete an enrollment card. This is the same as in the past so that they can get infinite campus access and enroll through infinite campus as well. Course confirmations will be sent out in early May. And the week of May 13th, we will have our school staff meeting and then tentative open house for K through eight. Families who want to attend or who are enrolled to attend and staff.
Almost when you're done.
Right? Time's up.
That was really, so Dr. Cartwright.
I refer it back over to Dr. Haritzak for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. Why do you think that there was such a drop-off for the advanced math? When I was reading through that, that was a pretty big number. Is there, do you guys have any, is it just because there's other offerings or is it? Right. We had just that one, and now we have multiple ones. So, you think people are moving into those specific ones that they want?
And/or students that are advanced in math, they tend to be STEMI. And that's my official word for students that enjoy STEMI, that enjoy, that enjoy science, engineering, math, et cetera. But there are other things that they can take for enrichment that they're able to do.
So, because we're offering like these really niche classes, we're seeing less people take the general class. That's kind of what I saw. I just wanted to make sure that's what I was understanding.
And I would encourage families, too, if their student really loves math, it is still a proper placement for them. We have a place for them in our, we're just not calling it advanced math. We're not segregating it. So, we do offer advancement in terms of their multi-grade level classes, and we will place them appropriately. So, that's not, yeah.
Not an issue.
That's how I read it, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it right.
Okay, correct.
Mr. Pichel, I wonder if you had a question?
Yep. Just a breakdown of numbers versus tier two and tier three employees. Like, how many did we have, we've been tier two, and how many did we have in tier three?
I don't, I don't have that off the top, I don't have that off the top of my head.
There weren't a lot of tier, tier three was the top.
Yep.
Wait a minute, did I miss those? Does that make everybody sick here? Or did it pass it?
There we go. So, tier three, there weren't as many as I actually thought there were going to be because they had to be consecutive years and six years or five years straight of summer school is, you know, pretty consistent. So, we did have some, but it wasn't, the majority were in the tier two at this point. And even for next year, will be in tier two. Some will, some will bump up. It was their last year at that level.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? I have a couple of questions on the registration. Is the registration online only?
No. So, the preferred, the preferred method for registration is online. The majority of our online registration is online. However, though, we know that we have families that don't, that don't always have internet access or access our families, our EL families and some of our other families that have requested already that they have paper copies or do everything through paper transactions. We absolutely accommodate them, and we have systems and processes in place in order to do that.
Over the years, there seems to be a very high level of interest in registration as soon as one can for summer school classes. So, how do we accommodate the volume that often occurs between eight and nine? I am in particular on that first registration date.
So, we've tried a different, we've tried a couple of different methods. So, last year, unfortunately, we had an overall systems issue that actually was not an Ashkeshiary School District issue. It was an infinite, it was our systems provider issue. And so, we do our very best not to have that issue, and we do have safeguards in place behind the scenes, such as as soon as we fill up in a certain course, it goes to a wait list. We actually download and print roster copies to make sure that we have student names and we know that where everybody's registered. I believe that we accommodated everybody that we needed to accommodate during that time, but I absolutely remember that morning. So, yes, yes. So, we are, we do, we do our best, but sometimes there's unforeseen things that we can't when you have that volume.
Very good. This report appears to focus primarily on regular education, and there is at least one reference to ESY, which I assume means extended school year, which applies to special education.
You bet.
Will there be an upcoming report on special education summer school?
Actually, no. And the reason is, is that our summer school is for all students. And so, all students are included in our summer school programming. And so, whatever a student needs in order to access our summer school programming, we provide that for the student.
Good to know.
If I may also, just for clarification, with extended, extended school year, it actually is not considered to be technically by definition, summer school. It truly is meant to be for those students who have significant, who potentially have demonstrated significant regression and are learning anytime that they do not have services. And so, as a result, there's a continuation of school, but it is not for the benefit or purposes of remediation or to extend out or enrichment that we often see within our summer school programs.
Very good.
I have, I have one more question.
Absolutely.
The proposed athletic camps, I didn't see any numbers related to enrollment on those on the charts that you provided, so.
Well, I don't have numbers with me at this point. They were well-attended. There is the August, we did have an August camp for CATS last year, and that is not going to be the case this year due to enrollment. But other than that, they are generally well-attended. I, we would have to dig through the numbers.
It's not a big deal. I just was, is that not something that is needed to be reported as much as these other courses or?
They are reported, they're in, they're reported in attendance numbers.
Okay.
But we just didn't print them out.
But they're just not broken down for that.
We haven't reported that out broken down. And this is like the.
Yeah. We could certainly have that.
No, I don't think that you need to. I just was inquiring because I didn't see this specific type of area broken down. So, that was it.
You have a question over here?
Well, just to kind of jump in with the CATS, going to West, I know those, the July and the June ones at least fill up pretty quickly within the hour. So, I mean, those are all filled by the end. Usually, like, people get waitlisted, I know.
And the Spartan ones as well, they're very well-attended, so.
I don't know how many, or how many years the Ashkeshiary School District has offered a summer school program, but I know it's in excess of 30. And I know a great deal of work goes into preparing for this and ensuring that our students have meaningful learning opportunities over the summer in many, many ways, to recover credits, to jump-start their high school careers so that they can take a course or maybe two in the summer and move their progress toward graduation along. And then, the many enrichment opportunities and opportunities to improve math skills and language arts or reading skills at the elementary level. So, I appreciate all the work that goes into not only preparing for this evening, but even more importantly, preparing for those thousands of children literally who will show up for the summer school program. So, thank you for your efforts. All right. Then, moving on. Do we have a request for any future agenda items? I actually have one. I attended the CISA VI Board of Control meeting last night. The Board of Control is like the school board for the CISA, our Regional Education Agency. And I had forwarded to all board members and Dr. Cartwright the results of the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding, which was a Wisconsin committee, which was formed about a year ago to look into school funding and to come up with recommendations. The recommendations were released on Monday, and I sent you a copy through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Dr. Nitske from CISA VI is not only the CISA VI Administrator, but he was one of the people on this committee. And he recommended that all of our CISA VI districts review the 11 pages worth of recommendations and discuss how they might impact our districts. We have a wonderful opportunity, and we've talked about this at this table before, being more involved in terms of legislation and policy and governance at the state level to really impact what comes next. One of the things that will be coming next is that Ted Nitske will be one of the people who has been invited to help write the legislation that goes behind these recommendations. So, we, as one of the largest school districts in CISA VI, and having a representative on that Board of Control, we have a wonderful opportunity here to have some input into where these recommendations go next. So, I would like to see us schedule this for an upcoming meeting.
Absolutely.
And talk about the input we would like to provide to CISA VI.
Okay.
That Board of Control meets once a month. It's the first Tuesday of the month. So, if we could schedule this before their March meeting, whichever, whatever date that would be, that would be great.
I think February.
February would be great.
Because there is a session on this at the convention that I'm planning on going to.
Excellent.
Excellent background.
Very good.
So, 13th or the 27th, Board meeting?
That'd be good. All right. Any other requests for future agenda items? Any announcements? I do have one announcement. One of my goals for this year has been to continue to promote professional development of our board. And we all have received a copy of key work of school boards, and I've contacted a consultant with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards who's in the Appleton area. I've seen her present. I've seen a lot of WASB people present, and I think Cheryl would be a great match for our school board. I had a chance to talk with her over the holiday. She's very willing to come and meet with us. What she recommends is a workshop, which could be a full day or it could be like two evenings to give us an overview of the entire book. And then, we can decide what we want to do next. Do we want to go chapter by chapter in each of the key work areas? Do we want to link the work that we've already done in terms of our self-evaluation on perceptions, the perception survey, and focus on those areas where we think we might show greater growth? So, that would be a decision to make later. But if it's all right with you, I would ask that Sherri pull the board to see if we could find an evening or two when we could invite Cheryl to come and meet with us.
Okay.
And do that overview and then move forward if that would be acceptable. That work for her?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Can, what's our timeframe, are you thinking in regards to that?
I'd like to do this before the end of April.
Okay.
If we could.
All right.
I know we have to work on board elections and such things, but I think we can do that.
Yeah. I think we've just been talking about it. We need to take action.
We have talked about this for a couple of years, so maybe this is the time to seize the day, harp a deum and think forward. All right. I will contact Sherri then and also Cheryl Stinskey and see what we can get scheduled. And our two high school reps are also welcome to attend those meetings.
No, your free time, your school schedule.
School musicals notwithstanding. Very good. Any other announcements? All right. Then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under. under Wisconsin statute 19.85, one per N C. And agenda item is A, contract renewals for specific administrators.
So, second?
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Evans, aye.
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Aye.
Grubba?
Aye.
Grubba, aye.
Aye.
Pashal?
Aye.
Pashal, aye, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much, meeting adjourned.